......
The mics, the mics are up. Feels like the lights are up.
Yeah, I think microphones are on.
Microphones are on. All right. For all schools in Lake County?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of July, January 9th, 2018 is now called to order. The time is 6:01 PM. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be turned off or put in the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. Mrs. Fisher is ill and will not be joining us this evening, and Ms. Cuckel may not, cannot join us either. We would like to take the opportunity to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's student representative is Valerie Lucas. Valerie is an eighth grader at Trafalgar Middle School, where she is secretary for the Student Government Association, a member of the Nautilus Team, as well as the Trafalgar Middle School Honor Society. Welcome, we're glad to have you here. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, one recognition, one acknowledgement, public comment, consent action items, which include one resolution, two items under executive services, one item under academic services, one item under business services, one item under human resources, five items under operations, as well as five superintendent recommendations, two of which are good cause. Dr. Atkins, would you please provide an explanation for those two items?
Changes which we need to get in place for the start of second semester. And the second recommendation involves Florida Gulf Coast University, the STAR program, which is really advanced intern student teachers that also need to be in place for second semester, so it needs to come before this board this evening to take action.
I find that there is good cause.
Point of order, if Ms. Fisher, if you're on speakerphone, please take it off and go to a handset.
Thank you, Steve.
It's creating an echo.
Or else, put it on mute.
Level two student teachers to be released early from their teaching placements to fill classrooms where certified teachers are not pleasant, present. The amount of this agreement is $110,000 for the period of January 9th, 2018 to June 30th, 2018, and shall renew for a three-year period unless terminated upon 90 days' advance written notice from either party. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve the agreement with FGCU for the STAR program to allow level-two student teachers to be released from their teaching placements to fill classroom, classrooms where certified teachers are not present. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Move by Ms. LaRiviere, seconded by Mr. Toyber. Discussion? I'm just going to offer that this is another change that's being made by the district in response to a significant challenge that we face with respect to staffing, and once again, the leadership has taken steps to partner with some of our higher education institutions, and this is a result of that. So, thank you, for all, to all of you who were involved in that. The next recommendation.
Next recommendation, I recommend approval to award the bid for cafeteria kitchen wares and equipment district-wide to...
We need to take a vote on that?
We need to go back to the...
I'm so sorry. I made a comment of, is there a motion to approve?
We already did that.
That's right. Okay, thank you, folks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, next recommendation, I recommend board approval to award the bid to cafeteria kitchen wares and equipment district-wide to Alac Culinary Sarasota, SRE Culinary, Beltram South, Inc., Business Services, Commercial Glass and Restaurant Supply, Inc., Global Restaurant Superstore, Pueblo Hotel Supply, Samtell &amp; Son, Inc., and W.H. Reynolds Distributor, LLC. TriMark Strategic Equipment, as indicated on the attached tabulation sheet. The bid will be effective for the period January 9th, 2018 through January 8th, 2019, at an estimated expenditure for the first year of $1,200,000, with renewal options for two additional one-year periods upon written agreement of the vendors and the district. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve award bid number 177298JC for cafeteria kitchen wares and equipment district-wide to specific vendors. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Move by Mr. Toyber.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Giavennelli. Any discussion? None, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval to piggyback NASPO Value Point Contract, RFP, and for MRO Facilities Maintenance Supplies awarded to WW Granger, Inc. for January 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2018, an estimated expenditure of $700,000 with option to cancel if deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve to piggyback NASPO Value Point Contract, RFP, number 1862, for maintenance repair operations products. Is there a motion to approve?
So move. Ms. Giavennelli.
Oh, thank you. Second?
Second.
Mrs. LaRiviere, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Next recommendation, I recommend board approval of the Phase One project planning pre-construction budget for Lehigh Senior High School addition in the amount of $1,184,000. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve Phase One for Lehigh Senior High School. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Toyber.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Giavennelli. Any discussion? Mr. Toyber?
I'm always concerned when we expand schools that are already beyond what we know is conducive to the best learning in, for high schools. However, we're in a crunch, people. You know, we have no money to build new schools, and we don't have places to put them. So, we have to do the best with what we have. And based upon our staff's analysis, the best thing we can do is eke out a little bit more to, 500, 250 or 500?
500.
550. 500 more students at Lehigh with a two-story complex at Lehigh. I encourage the staff, as we, this board will be looking very, very, with a very high level of scrutiny as far as the assessability of our, of the resources that go along with education, not just the seats, but, you know, the cafeteria, the transportation, the egress, the impact on the community. All those things, our staff, you know, will take into consideration because we have a good staff doing this, but it's something that the public needs to know, that we are in a crisis mode of trying to find student, student seats for a continuing growing district that continues, the kids keep coming. So they're not stopping, and we have to do things, and, you know, we're trying to do it through, you know, our internet seats, you know, through our virtual education, building our new schools, as you saw in Benita, the new school that's going in out of Gateway. We just can't get enough seats, and with that, we're trying to do it with the most economical way. So, the public needs to really get tucked in when we start telling people about the fact that we need help. I'm going to support this motion because I think it's very well-vetted, and I believe us everywhere we turn, and we really need the community to take notice and be informed and help us with this, this situation because it's not going away anytime soon. Thank you.
Mrs. Giavennelli.
And I just want to add to that. I was at Lehigh, and they are busting at the seams. And they are going from clear across the campus to the portable, portables, and there's, I didn't count them all, but there's a lot of portables. And once, that is the area that the new building's going to be in, so it's, it's going to affect them tremendously. And they have a hard time, they have a, getting there timely, like, it's the, it's a, I don't know how long their window is, it's quite, quite long to get, to allow them to get there, to travel that across campus. So, they are busting at the seams.
And I personally am just looking forward to us, and for the public to watch as we're going through this new plan for our construction and renovation and remodeling for our facilities, and how we are budgeting things along the way and doing our due diligence. So, I'm looking forward to watching this process as we do this addition.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve?
I did already. It's seconded, recall for the board.
And Mrs. Giavennelli seconded. It says right here. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, next we have a public hearing. Dr. Atkins, would you please present your recommendations for this evening's public hearing?
I recommend board approval to contract with Athenian Academy, Inc. for a school designed for students in grades K through eight, be called Athenian Academy Charter School. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute related documents.
At this moment, we will recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing. The public hearing this evening is to consider approval of the contract for charter school from Athenian Academy. At this point, the public will be invited to speak for, to speak to this one item. Time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone on the right side who wishes to speak? Anyone on the left side? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of January 9th. Dr. Atkins, please restate your recommendation for this evening's recommend, for this evening's public hearing item.
Next, the recommendation is I recommend board approval of the contract with Athenian Academy, Inc. for a school designed for students in grades K through eight, to be called Athenian Academy Charter School. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute related documents.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve the contract with Athenian Academy. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. LaRiviere.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Toyber. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And that concludes our business for this evening. It's time for board member comments and reports. Mr. Toyber, would you like to start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm sorry that the young girl from North Fort Myers Academy Arts left because we all are very sensitive to our busing schedule. However, we currently have 750 buses in Lee County School District, and we run three tiers, back-to-back-to-back, to run our three tiers, our middle school, elementary, and our high schools. High schools are the earliest because very soon when they, you know, matriculate out of high school and they go to the workforce, or they go to college, hopefully they'll have early classes, but for sure in the workforce, they'll have to get up early and it's a, they might as well start it earlier. Because we defer to put the elementary children at the latest, at the, at the optimum time, and we put the middle school children later. For us to actually run the buses so we would allow everybody to be the ideal time, we'd have to add 1,500 buses at a cost of $150 million in capital, $67 million in operating costs, and $22 million in operating costs for, for maintenance and repair. That's a total of $239 million we'd have to invest with an annual incurred cost of over $80 million a year for us to be able to do that. And we just can't, we just don't have the money. So, those are some of the hard decisions that we have to do when it talks to, to money that, you know, when we talk about impacting education, impacting our students. We'd love to have more student, you know, more dollars in the classroom, and so we can't take the mu, the buses to get them there if we can do it economically with a weighted cost and an economic analysis that this board does. So that's the reason why we are the way we are. The last thing I want to say is, you know, one of our people in public comment, made a comment about one of our, our officers in our executive staff, and Dr. Desmore I've had the opportunity to work with for 12 years, and I'm honored to serve with her for the 12 years, and I, and I wish her well that she's leaving. And she's leaving to move on to a better opportunity, that's something that she's earned, and she, it's not for any other reason. She has worked well here and served us well, and it's not with any meaning for animosity, but the fact that she is doing what's best for her and her family, and we all wish her well. It's a huge loss for our district, and we will have big shoes to fill, but I just wanted to say personally, I wish you well, and thank you for everything that you've done for our school district.
Mrs. LaRiviere?
You're loved, in case you couldn't tell that. And no one is saying that you have big feet, just big shoes. We've got to put some humor to that. Otherwise, I have no other comments at this time. I, I have to say that, but I do have to say that I am very proud of our superintendent. I believe he makes very wise and judicious decisions, and sometimes those decisions are difficult and cannot often be explained. And many times that's because of the ethical aspect of, some things are just kept private. And I trust you in that. So I want to give you that recommendation.
Mrs. Giavennelli?
I have none, just happy new year.
Mrs. Patrica?
No, thank you. I also want to congratulate Dr. Desmore on her career change. I think she's entering an exciting new phase for her life, and I, I wish her well. I will tell you, the very first time I saw her, I was a new member of the Finance Advisory Committee, and Dr. Desmore did a presentation, and I turned to somebody and I said, "Who is that woman? My word." I mean, she had, her grasp of, of the minutia of the district budget, but her, you know, view from 30,000 feet, she had it all. She was the whole package. I was just really impressed. And, and I, I have to say that in the six years I've been on the board, I have, just my regard for her has just grown. So, you will be missed, but we are excited for you. So, thank you. At this time, I would also like to make another comment. I have requested the superintendent to schedule a special meeting of the school board for Tuesday morning, January 16th, for the purpose of discussing a sales tax referendum. An agenda and backup material will be provided prior to the meeting.
And that concludes, yes, Mrs. Giavennelli?
Oh, gee.
And we have Ms. Lucas, please.
First of all, I just wanted to say I think you guys do a great job of running our school district and making sure it runs smoothly. I think that, on the whole, Lee County is one of the better school districts in Florida. I wouldn't say it's perfect because nothing is perfect. I think there are definitely changes that could be made to help improve the lives of teachers and students in the county, and I trust that you'll be able to make the decisions that will make them happen.
And that's why you're on the committee. Thank you very much for your service.
You're welcome.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, Ms. Morgan, did you intend to describe that as a workshop, the meeting next Tuesday?
I'm sorry, did I not call, it is a special workshop of the board.
I have nothing further, thank you.
It'll be in the morning.
Just my, my comment first, when you work with someone that is talented and gifted as, as Dr. Desmore's, you know, you're, you have to consider yourself fortunate if you're able to work with that individual for the number of years that I've had that opportunity. You know, I've always said it's, it's much better to be able to work with a highly talented person for a short period of time than to, to work with somebody that's, you know, average for a long period of time. But in her case, it's been, I've been able to work with somebody who's an incredible talent, who has a, a passion for children in this district, who sticks up for, for schools. And, you know, one of the things that, that, that Mr. Thomas mentioned, you know, there are disagreements that occur. And one of the things that I really liked about Dr. Desmore's is that she was willing to stick up for what she believes in and disagrees, and many times you find yourself coming around to her opinion on things. And, and any leader needs to surround themselves with people who have the courage to disagree with them when they feel that, that they're doing the right thing, and, and make that known. And so, but fortunately, we agree on much, much more than we, you know, on the slight disagreement than anybody's going to have if you work for somebody for as long as we work with. So, you know, it, it is a wonderful opportunity for her, and that's another thing you, you learn as a leader, is never, ever stand in somebody's way when they have a, another opportunity for a promotion and just something where it works out better for my career and family and all of that. So you just want to, you grit your teeth and, and, but, and then, on the one hand, and then turn around and wish them well on the other, knowing that you, you know, hope that we will continue to have a great relationship moving forward. We're talking about Florida Southwestern, I hope you don't mind me saying, but Florida Southwestern is one of our partners, and Dr. Desmore's has already indicated that she wants to continue to have a close working relationship with us because we still share that job of educating the youth of this particular community. And I think that we will be stronger, you know, both of us, all of us, working in these two different organizations to make that happen. So it has been an absolute honor. Dr. Desmore's is the, besides myself, the longest-serving cabinet member in our district office. And so, you know, she and I have been members of cabinets for many, many years and, and have been through quite a bit together. So, I will miss her, but I also know that, you know, she's just a phone call away. So, and that, that concludes my comments. I have nothing further.
Thank you very much. The next scheduled meeting of the board is Tuesday, January 23rd. There is a school board workshop at 2:00 PM as well as a school board action meeting at 6:00 PM. Excuse me. Lisa? Yeah. At this point, having no other business?
Go, go, go.
I will attend, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Mrs. LaRiviere?
Second.
Mr. Toyber, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.